Oh, you're welcome.
Counsel, could you take your seats, please? Okay. We'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order, please. Could everyone take their seats? All right, counsel, we are going to move the presentation for review and approval employee compensation. We're moving that back over to the city manager's report, and we're going to go straight to the consent agenda. Counsel, is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like to have pulled before making a motion? Anyone? Anything?
I'm there, ready. You want to pull something?
I just want to talk about...
Why don't you pull your mic over in front of you there? We're good?
I'm good.
We're good? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, good. We're at a public hearing. Audrey?
Actually, John Gutierrez.
Oh, oh, John.
This is mine. This is the first of two public hearings that we have to hold pursuant to our agreement with the county on the use of the CDBG funds. As you know, every year annually after our budget takes effect in October, usually around November, we get an allocation through the federal government, through the county, for the use of CDBG funds within the city. This year, the estimate for the 2012-2013 allocation should be about $230,000 net to the city. In the past, and we are asking that the council consider something a little bit different this year. In the past, we, staff has recommended that we use those funds within the geographically eligible area for public infrastructure projects. In dealing with Daryl and his folks from Public Works, we are now concerned that there may not be a strategically necessary, high priority eligible project within the defined geographic area. He's still working on that. But while we're going through the process of having the public hearings, and we do need to have two, as I indicated, we would like the council to consider the possibility of using those funds for some other eligible activities. And in the green sheet, I gave you examples of three different types of eligible activities. Now, the good news is that we're not asking council to make a definitive consensus tonight. What I would like to suggest is that we hold a public hearing, see if there is any public input. We schedule the next public hearing for two weeks from now when the next regular meeting is, but that we consider at that time continuing that meeting, that public hearing. And I believe, Audrey, we can do that. Is that the case?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in the meantime, that council independently take a look at the suggestions that we've put in about other possible uses. I can get you more definitive regulations about the different types of eligible uses, and we'd like to see if we can't get some ideas, and then take that time to work with the county staff, because they do administer these projects, so that we can come up with a recommendation that is both applicable to what the council wants, part of our strategic plan, and also doable. As you can see from the three examples, I tried to point out that each has its benefits. Each also has some negative aspects. Some are hard to monitor. Some frankly could involve some long-term financial obligations beyond CDBG dollars. So we want to really take our time and kind of consider this as we go forward. So again, after a public hearing tonight, I would just like to invite council to get in touch with us. We will then take that opportunity to take your input, work with county staff, and then come up with recommendations to follow.
Okay. And just in short, the money still has to be spent within that geographical area, correct?
There are other ways to spend those dollars, but you would have to be able to document that the beneficiaries were also eligible, and that is usually fairly labor-intensive.
Okay. All right, any questions, counsel? Go ahead, Martha.
I just have a comment to your point, Mayor. Good question. Did we not use community development block grant funds to do the pedestrian walkways and the pavilion at the rec center?
The pedestrian walkways?
I thought we used a couple of extra ones at the rec center for that, you know, the...
Futsal.
The Futsal Community Pavilion. We call it the Pavilion.
Yes, I believe that was CDBG.
Yeah, so my understanding of reading it is if it serves people who are targeted in that census tract, Mayor, that overall, you know, that you can be helpful to them, then you can use it. For instance, I like the idea, we talked about bus shelters, like several meetings ago. I'd like us to see maybe if we can use those funds for that project. We looked at design, we talked about location, and it's been quite successful, by the way, the new line. So I'd like to see us maybe check that possibility.
Of course, we are still working with the county about using the funds that they already have for bus shelters, so we wouldn't want to do this, I don't think, in lieu of that.
No, but maybe a portion of it. Thank you so much.
As I said, if you can get us some ideas, we'll work with county staff and see which ones are actually doable, and then come back with recommendations.
There's one for you.
Good. Carl?
And we appreciate the comments, Councilwoman. Also eligible for CDBG use is economic development incentives and projects that we can do. And there is a portion of our downtown area that is income-eligible within that geographic area. So I've just seen in other cities where we get to a point where we've done all of the CIP projects we can do, and then all of a sudden, we're just searching around for things to spend money on. We want to make sure that they're strategic, that it's something the council wants to do, it's going to benefit the city, biggest bang for our bucks. That's what we're looking for ideas. Thank you.
Okay, good. Janet?
I'd like to make a motion to move it forward.
Why don't we, we'll go for public comment first, and see if there is any. Any members of the public this time wish to speak on this matter, please come forward. You're smiling, Laura. So now you have to come up here and talk.
Oh, it's her.
Don't you hate it when the teacher calls on you? Isn't that funny?
Well, she makes a motion. I'd second it, Mayor.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve and second, and we're going to send this to second reading. Is that correct? Now, if it changes substantially, is it just like any other, anything? If it changes substantially, are we going to have to go through the whole process again, or this is all right?
I don't believe so. I think we can set the second hearing, and as a practical matter, I would suggest that we probably be continuing that meeting to a future date.
Okay, good. All right, good. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay. John, you have anything else? Right there? Okay, Audrey, what do you got first?
Thank you. I have some ordinances to read. First one is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Family Dollar CPD to rezone from C-1A Commercial, C-1A, to Commercial Plan Development CPD on land located at 10811 Furlong Street, Benita Springs, Florida, on .74, more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading will be held on March 19th, 9:00 a.m. in these chambers. That's your zoning hearing.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? We have a motion to move forward to second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay. Now, Audrey. Item 10.
Item 10, I need to pull the three items that are item 10, which is a zoning resolution for a variance for Nicola Monk, a special exception request by Coastal Landscape Horticultural Waste Transfer Site, and a special exception request by FRLS Old 41 LLC for, again, a Horticultural Waste Transfer Site. The resolutions were not properly advertised in the Fort Myers News Press on the date they were supposed to run. Because of that deficiency, we're re-advertising, and it is scheduled for March 19th, which is your regular city council zoning hearing date, 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay. Good. And you know, you don't need to vote on that? You don't need anything from us, right?
Right.
Done. Okay, counsel, any questions?
Mayor, we should point out that that was not the staff's fault. That was the newspaper's fault.
I think staff's very happy to tell you that part. They're not happy campers.
Audrey being a genius now, well, you know, of course, it couldn't have been her. Anyway, so, all right, what have we got now? Audrey, you got a second reading?
I have a second reading of the following ordinance. This is, and I'll read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Charter Section 53, changing the boundaries of the existing city council members' districts in Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, and establishing new boundaries in accordance with Article 1, Section 53 of the Benita Springs City Charter, the Florida statutes, the Florida Constitution, and other legal requirements, providing for severability, providing for conflict and repeal, and providing an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was first read at your February 15th, 2012, meeting. I do have the affidavit of publication, affidavit of publication, and I have reviewed it, and it is legally sufficient. At this time, you can proceed with the hearing on it. I do have, if you don't mind, if I may approach city council, I have copies of Plan 5B that are larger than what is contained in the ordinance. It's the same document, because I think...
Because we can't see them. Thank you.
Right. This is what is referred to when we talk to Plan 5B, if I may go forward, if you'll hand it out, and we have access for any members of the audience interested. And Carl, can explain Plan 5B, the map, actual proposed map?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Plan 5B, the only changes on this map from what was on Plan 5A, which was presented to you at the last council meeting, was an adjustment to the proposed District 3 line, moving southward to the creek, and then running along Benita Beach Road, and then stepping back up. And then, for the difference in that population, got shifted to the new proposed District 2. I know there were some discussions about District 5. Unfortunately, we were unable to make the numbers work with the shift in District 5 without, you know, if we tried to go north, or we tried to go south, or we tried to go to the west, we'd be getting into neighborhoods and splitting neighborhoods, and the numbers wouldn't work. So we did everything we can. We hope this is, will reach approval tonight by council. Thank you.
Okay, good. Counsel, what did you got?
I just have one recommendation, and that's to be clear, and, you know, Councilman Slacta certainly weighed in, and Councilwoman Martin on this item, because it affects both of them. But it would just be maybe, I know we talked about moving it south of the creek, but that's when 5 came down there or something. Maybe all of Dean Street south should be in red. That would just be less confusing than people trying to figure out what streets are carved out. All of Dean Street between Old 41 to...
Imperial.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Imperial Parkway. No, I appreciate that. Being, because they can absorb more people into 3, and 2 can afford to lose a few there. So that might just be for the convenience of the voters to understand where they belong. You hear what I'm saying, folks? I think it makes sense.
That actually was Plan A.
Sorry.
5A was all the way to Dean Street, District 3.
Thank you. You know, just looking at this, it's just crazy.
Good, go ahead, Steve.
How does that affect the population positively or negatively? District 2. Well, District, I don't know what the numbers are exactly, but District 2 obviously would lose some population from the 5B plan here. District 3 would pick up some population, but you're within the range of variance that you're allowed, so the numbers will work if you want to do that, because they worked on Plan 5A.
So it's de minimis. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I have a suggestion that might balance out this. And previously, District 2 included Southern Pines, which is the, that sort of that slice between Imperial Parkway, 75, and Terry Street North. That was in District 2 previously. If Councilwoman Martin is giving up that piece, then maybe Southern Pines would fit better back in her district, District 2.
So ship, yeah, because those are your peeps.
But I have a tit-for-tat.
And so, yeah, that...
It's getting crazy.
There's a lot of people in Southern Pines, but yeah, that might, that might help.
We want to bring up the beach again? No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, yeah, that's a pretty good chunk of population right there, isn't it?
Yes, again, I don't have the population numbers for that kind of a change.
Well...
Yeah, I think that Martha's suggestion there, it's pretty de minimis, quite frankly, because there's just, especially part of that red on the other side of the creek.
Right, the school is across street from vacant property. But someday, it won't be. Someday, that'll be...
That's right. There's a lot of someday in this map, though, so that doesn't really matter.
I know.
I don't know, Steve. It seems like that's a pretty big chunk there. Are you talking about the entire yellow piece right there on, between?
That's huge.
I don't know how many people are in Southern Pines. Are you talking North Carolina, South Carolina?
Oh, I see what you're talking about.
A lot of them are snowbirds, so we don't know where they're registered as voters.
They do it by population, but not by registered voters.
We do this by census block, so, I mean, if you identify a geographic area, we'll be able to go back and tell you how much population that's going to mean.
Steve, were you talking about that, the entire, the yellow area in between?
I'm talking about this little piece right here, between Imperial and 75, down to Terry Street.
North Carolina.
It's primarily Southern Pines.
Right. North Carolina, South Carolina.
They're nice people. I'd love them, but Councilwoman Martin has represented them for the last four years, and Councilwoman Grant was prior to that. It's, it's, it's fine with me. I just don't think it makes sense, consistency.
What do you think the parameters are there? Is it 500 people, 200 people? What do you think you've got?
Well, I'll tell you what. District 2 right now is close to the edge. All right, they're at the top range. District 2 is already at the top range of variance.
We went from the smallest to the largest, Janet. Look at that. No.
Well, I don't, I'm just saying, that just makes more sense.
Yeah, it does.
We talked about trying to be consistent when we made these decisions. She's giving up south of Dean Street down to Benita Beach Road. I don't know what that population is. But I also have another comment.
Okay. But if you go, if you go, if you go back, and it's over, it's going to be over, what you're looking for, isn't it?
If she gave up from the river south.
No, Lime Street east.
Yes, I understand. What I'm saying is that if she gave up from the river, south, all the way down past Dean to the, da-da-da-da, to District 3, because they're still able to... You know, that looks like a chunk 2, but I think maybe 3 could take it up.
3 would go up to Dean Street?
No, I'm saying 3 could go up to the river.
3 is up to the river, is it not?
No, that's 2.
Well, it's up to one river.
3 goes up to Dean Street. We talked about that. Well, what if you put 3 up to the river, and then that would give enough breathing room for Councilwoman Martin probably to take back in Southern Pines.
You are pretty densely populated in that area.
Yeah.
You've got small lots, lots of homes. And again, I don't have the numbers here tonight. I would just be concerned about the impacts, but we're happy to go back and try to rework some of these things.
My own opinion there is that I don't really think that we need to overcomplicate it too much. I think that we're pretty close there. It's just my own opinion on it. And we could spend a whole lot of time shuffling little areas around there. I mean...
Look, it was just, it was obvious to me when I looked at this, that that was a major change from what had been in the past, and that's why I brought it up. But since District 1, Pelican Landing, had the only citizen input on district redistricting, I have to ask that we continue with District 1 across the Estero Bay to include Lover's Key. There are 100 people. It's 100 plus, adds 100 people. And I know there's a great deal of sense for Councilman Slacta to take this into 3, but once again, the only people who made an effort to talk about maintaining that aid district were the people from Pelican Landing who wanted to hold on to that piece.
All right, and that line would have to actually come to cover the piece of property they're talking about. It would have to actually...
Right now, it cuts across...
Yeah, it'd have to come, it'd have to cut at a kind of an angle down from where it is, right?
It does today.
Yeah, it does today.
And District 1 could take 100 people from the count right now, without any other changes. Could take 100 people. And District 3 would lose 100? And District 3 would lose 100, but you'd still be, you'd be within the variance range.
Yeah, you'd still be above District 6.
And of course, if you went back up to Dean Street, then of course, you'd pick up additional population there, if that's what you wanted to do.
But not a lot. There's not tons of people south of Dean Street.
No.
You know, I'm thinking, you probably have 100 houses in there, Ben?
Yeah, right now, until those two subdivisions come on.
Yeah, well, they're not there yet.
That's yours. Yeah, that's yours.
Yep. Which could still let him go if he loses 100. He could still go up to the river, and she could take back in Southern Pines.
Can we see if that'll work, then?
Yeah. Explain the river thing again. Take up to the river, you mean?
District 3 goes up to the river.
Three north to the river.
Just, just the orange part.
District 3 up to the river, and North Carolina, Southern Pines goes back to 2.
I'm guessing that that would probably work. You see what she's talking about there? Is just take, continue the red section, we'll call it the red section.
Right.
Straight up to West Terry Street, or no, to the river, just to the river.
Right, east of Dorch.
East of Horn.
Just the river.
East of Horn.
East of Horn, yes.
East of Horn.
So basically, District 3 would start at Old 41, and Dean would head east to Horn, north to the river, follow the river back to Imperial. Is that correct?
There's a natural, there's a natural stop kind of at Horn Avenue. Wouldn't you say that's true, Ben? If you get both sides of Horn in there, because it dead ends there? And then Dorch would be a good place to start another section. I'd take Horn. Give me Horn. All of it.
And then the entire yellow portion now in District 1, east of Imperial Parkway, would go into District 2. Is that the proposal? Okay.
Right, the sliver in between there.
Yep. I can't sit here and tell you right now that that will work number-wise.
What's our timeframe like? Are we okay?
It's tight. It's tight. We need to have, we need to have another, yet another...
Counsel, you have two options to not, well, you have three options. One, you could adopt Plan B as is, which I take it that's not going to happen. But the other two options is you can adopt Plan 5B as modified, and Carl will make a 5B subset 1 or something like that, and that will have the changes that you reflected tonight. Alternatively, if you feel that the population may not work, or you think you may be challenged on the population, what you could do is continue it for two weeks for us to bring the new map for, as an attachment.
But we have time to continue it for two weeks?
I think, yeah. I built two weeks into the system.
Okay. Carl, are you going to feel more comfortable if we, if we change things around here for you to go back and take a look at it instead of adopting it as is?
Well, why don't you go ahead and adopt it with the proposed changes?
All right.
And we'll cross our fingers and hope it works, and if not, we'll be back with a new map in two weeks. Does that sound fair?
Can we do that?
Because if it works, then we don't have to come back.
All right, now we need to, okay, we're clear on the...
I can always have to do a corrected ordinance. I mean, we could do that.
And you're pretty clear on what they just suggested?
Yes, I've got it down.
Now, what about Councilwoman McIntosh? It's hard to say, made a land grab there, but it's, it's in there already.
No, it's there.
Yeah, it's in there already. He would like to maintain that. Audrey, what, what problems, do you have any problems at all legally for that? It's just, it's just that we were trying to keep it along the coast, or you were trying to keep from going across waterways, or what was the reasoning behind that?
You're allowed to use, I mean, it was there before, and the resolution did say that you try to keep it as consistent as the old maps as you can, so that's supportive for that.
So that would be a rationale for doing that?
But then you can also say, natural geographic boundaries, but you do have these as islands. So, I mean, there's a multiple different, I can argue both sides, which means, counsel, do as you wish.
Well, I think...
I think, I'll tell you, Mayor, from the staff's viewpoint, I think the reason we suggested that the whole beach be in one district, District 3 in this particular case, was the whole thing about communities of interest, and that you've got beach folks out there on the islands, and they may well have a different perspective than other folks who are more inland. But that was the thought there, but again, counsel's pleasure on this.
I'll go for it, being up there with as-is, as it stands today. Seems like they've been in here a couple of times, saying they want to do it.
I think I can support what Steve said, mainly because of that caveat that it's like that right now, so you're maintaining what's historical, so I don't know. Stephen, what's your thoughts on it?
I don't, I don't have any problems.
Okay. Counsel, I mean, do you think that's okay?
I tried to make that argument on side, but that didn't work for me.
Come on now, we got to get through this somehow.
How about going back to my original, how about going back to my original request to wanting to represent the Benita Bay Beach Club?
Yeah. There's no population there. You wouldn't gain anything.
There's nobody living there.
And did you want to just carve it, and the problem is, is I need things to be contiguous, so I would have to almost loop it across the waterway, which the state has done in gerrymandering, but...
But it would break up...
Consistent with what we just did, correct, for District 1?
No, because in your situation, you create an enclave.
It's already in one.
The enclave is my problem.
That's the enclave thing. You create an enclave. Can't create enclaves.
Yeah, you would, you would actually have to take, you would have to go across and take everything up there, up towards that way.
So you could take from Benita Beach Park north up to, all the way to the end of Hickory Island, and then start District 3 south of Benita Beach Park, and then move District 3 outward. But then you now have, as far as communities of interest, you now have three council members taking...
Boy, this makes more sense all the time.
You know, Hickory Island.
Yeah, the point, I guess the point of the difference is, that entire, that entire piece from the bridge north is almost all Mangrove and Mangrove Islands. Until you get to the very tip, where you have Lover's Key, they have three high rises, or two high rises and a resort, and that's considerably and notably different than that piece south, which Councilman Slacta has been representing.
Yeah. And keeping, keeping it in the red, in the red here, keeping it in 3 would be consistent with the neighborhood and the way it has been for quite a while, too, which is one of the goals as well.
Well, putting that back into 1, or leaving it in 1, historically leaving it in 1, gives us the ability to shift that 100 people, so Councilman Slacta can take more up to the river, too. Balance.
All right. Peter, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we could gerrymander that through there to where, unless you just, unless you were to take the whole upper part of that all the way up the way, and I don't, I don't think that that's...
And what's the population there?
Zero.
Zero.
No, no.
No, I mean, there's people there.
No, no, no. If you took from, if you took from his beach park to the north.
Right, because you have condominiums, you have Benita Beach.
Oh, a lot, no.
It would be significant.
It'd be a significant population. I would be one of your...
And you know what? That district is already before a court. That's District, what, 30? The one that Senator Richter, so we start messing around on that. They're really going to go crazy.
Yeah, okay.
Politically, you may have some issues.
Yeah.
Counsel, so far as the changes that have been proposed here, I mean, you okay with everything?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And Peter, I, again, I understand what you're, what you're trying to do there, but I don't know how to do it without, without really taking a whole lot of people that are historically in that district there. I don't know.
Right.
Anyway, okay.
Okay. Yes.
You okay? You need, we need a motion to...
Motion.
To approve as...
Public hearing?
Amended.
Amended, okay.
Public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. No? No? Going, going, gone? Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Who made the second?
Nobody did yet. Oh, no.
Did you?
Martha? Martha did.
Did you say so?
Okay, sure, why not?
Roll call, please.
Whatever you say.
Councilwoman Simons?
Yes.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Okay, and then we got to, let's see, that was it for that. And you're going to go ahead and let us know pretty quickly what that, if it's going to hold water or not?
Right.
Population-wise.
Hold water.
For people, so to speak.
Yuck, yuck.
Okay, population wise.
Okay.
Okay, very good, well done. Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Ives, okay, discussion concerning, uh, City Council Committee assignments and reassignments and tasks. Council, can, can we put this off for one more meeting, would that be all right?
Sure, it's Council's pleasure on this.
But, but, I want you, we've got these things now, why don't you go ahead and, and be talking about it, and to save a little time here, why don't we go ahead and talk about this at the following, next meeting, would that be all right with you guys? All right?
Mayor?
Yes?
I asked, um, Carl to give us all a sheet, also because Councilman Simmons wasn't included on the sheet that we had in her packet, so I thought it was good little homework for everybody to be able to check that off and give that to Diane, and they can compile it and, uh, see where everybody comes up on the.
Okay, we usually have a discussion, though, is that the way we usually do it, is, is to have the discussion, so we can have that discussion the next meeting, if that's okay?
Well, of course it's okay.
Good, good, good.
I mean, I'm sure that's what you wanna do, but I know in the past that we've put in our little homework, and then we all compare our notes, and we see, you know, who's, who's good with who.
Carl. Okay, thank you. First off, I want to assure Councilmember Simmons that we'll type your name in there, so it looks a little bit more permanent than it does right now. Sorry about that, sir.
Hey, okay.
And also, and maybe this is just a new guy question, but, um, probably someday I might have to stop saying that, right, it's been nine months.
I'm the new guy.
I'm just, yeah, that's right.
I took that honor away from you.
I'm not the new guy anymore, all right. Um, I'm just curious as to why some of these are on here, why it needs individual council liaisons or appointments, I mean, things like city operations and budget and finance, which I think a lot of these things, you could probably wipe out ten or fifteen of these at least, because they're under city administration, which is responsible to me, and of course, I'm responsible to all of you. So, just a thought. Just a thought, it's just.
Well, and we can have that conversation at that time as well, how about that?
There you go.
There you go. All right, uh, good, let's, moving right along, uh, let's see, a resolution appointing a member to the City of Benita Springs Board of Land Use Hearings and Adjustments.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Wes Norris.
Uh, oh, oh, okay.
Wait a minute, how do we do this?
Hold on, uh, could you go ahead and, uh, we have something I want to pass out here, and what it is, it's a list that contains all the people who have, uh, expressed.
Oh, interest.
A interest in this, and, uh, what we're gonna do, we're gonna kinda do this the old-fashioned way.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna go ahead, everybody's gonna vote for one and one person, okay, no two, no three, just one person.
Mayor.
On there, and, and we'll have, we'll talk for this.
This is a change in our procedure.
I, I, I don't.
Well, yeah, because you remember how we used to do this? The person, uh, and, and we're getting all confused about this, because they're indicating this, we had like four people in District One at one point, but that wasn't a District One appointment, remember, we were doing this by appointment?
Right.
We haven't changed that yet, we haven't had a conversation about that.
If you'll let me, if you'll let me finish what.
Yeah.
We got started here. Um, I think that, that it's, it's a time right now, you can, everybody can express what, if they want to, what, who they would like to see on there, or, or make a nomination, so to speak, unofficial nomination, or, or make a recommendation, uh, and we've heard a lot of recommendations made by the public.
Sure.
Uh, and, uh, and then everybody can, and you've gotta put your name on here, so you can go ahead and mark, mark the person you want, put your name on there, and then we'll see what we come up with, if it comes up with a tie or something like that, well, then we'll, we'll, we'll go for that.
No, all I'm saying is that in the past, what we've done is, that's a District Five appointment, that's a, that's the mayor's appointment, that's a District Two appointment for zoning board and LPA, that has been our process, and I don't remember having the conversation changing that yet. So if it's a District, whatever, I have noticed lately that we've been saying, we, we tried to figure this out by doing this the right way, and that is, not that the person lives in District Five, or District Two, or District Six, or whatever, but that, that was that person's appointment, and so the appointment, if that person's retiring out of that spot, goes to that person, that was one of those delightful characteristics of getting to be a councilperson, is that, uh, throughout the city, we would have representation throughout the city, uh, for the, for the board.
Right, right.
And now you're changing procedure.
Um, not exactly, but.
We used to hear from that councilperson who their recommendation was to you.
The, the, this council, uh, John Mathis, when he retired, that was a, that was a, um, uh, position that I had appointed when I was Councilman in District Six, uh, and I believe that Newsbaum was a councilperson that you recommended.
That's correct.
For District Six.
It got messed up.
So, so because of that, I think that that behooves us to, to, to even this up the way we messed it up the first time. Uh, now, now, I, I think this is gonna work out, I mean, it's just, it just is.
So then that was your appointment?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
So, as your appointment, you're taking the liberty of allowing us to vote, instead of you just saying who you want?
If I can get it out of my mouth who I want, I will tell you.
Oh, good, okay. Don't make fun of me, I'm just bringing up.
I'm not making fun of you, I'm just telling, I'm telling you, okay.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, you know, I've, I've heard a lot of what the public has had to say, and I, and I understand that. Uh, my, my particular preference, and I, and I'm willing to hear everybody else's preference if you like, my particular preference is, is Wesley Norris, mainly because I think that Wesley, when he served on there for that period of time, I think it was unfair for, for him, he didn't know that there was even a remote chance that he would not be selected back again, he wasn't given that opportunity to ask if he would serve again. Uh, I, I really think that I, I would love to have Wes Norris back on there, uh, and, and that's, that's my particular preference. Council, you're, you're welcome to vote any way that you want to, but I, I'm just saying that that's what I'm gonna do.
God, I would support that.
And there you go.
We got around the same place in the playground.
And so, and so, that's it, uh, I, I, I would encourage everybody to mark whoever they want to, but I'm just telling you, okay? And whatever you decide, I'm, is good with me.
Mayor?
All right.
But we might wanna have this discussion about how we do this the right way, again, for the six times.
Actually, Councilman McIntosh, uh, the city clerk and I did meet, and I do have something that I was planning to bring back to you guys, it just seems like this has been kind of a crowded meeting.
Uh, hello.
We're good, we're good. Uh, everybody, uh, just put it up here, someone will come pick it up. And I'm sure it will take hours to, to have you like this.
Public record. Um, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I know.
It's been that way, and then we've been screwing it up, so.
Me personally?
Not you. I'm not gonna point fingers.
Uh, let's see.
Bennett, by the way, it was an excellent list of people.
It was, it was an incredible list of people, everybody on there is qualified, I'm, that's why I said, whatever you guys decide.
So nice. What?
Uh, it goes to Mr. Norris with four votes.
Yeah, imagine that.
Okay, uh, do we, we need a motion in a second then after that?
Make the motion.
I'm, you make the motion, I'll make the second, uh, to accept the, uh, the results, uh, roll call.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Just to be squirrely, I should say no because of the way we did it. But of course, we want Wes Norris, okay.
That's a aye, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, mov- moving along, we're gonna go ahead and do, um, let's see, is it, uh, Item C? Uh, provide direction to City Council to prepare an ordinance, resolution, establish a special fund. Uh, Stephen, would you like to talk about this for a minute?
Yeah, well, it's getting late, Mayor, but, uh, anyway, I think, uh, we, we've gone around the horn on this one, I think everybody, uh, in my opinion, I kind of sensed that the council was not really happy with a special assessment, uh, for the people on Hickory Boulevard. And, uh, it, I asked Audrey if she could draft up something, uh, we looked at an ordinance or a resolution, and frankly, at this hour, I don't care what it is. I don't care if it's a safe or a piggy bank, all I want to make sure is the Hickory Boulevard people do not have to come back and deal with, uh, every eight to ten years, uh, praying for the money to, to keep the beach re-nourished. So, whatever it takes.
Audrey, um, so the next, uh, we, we give you direction to develop some type of device, some type of mechanism to create a fund or standalone thing?
Correct.
Uh, you, you can by the next meeting have it back to us?
I was hoping to be, because I'm good, not gonna be.
Oh, okay, well, at some point in time, you can have that done.
I would bring something timely back.
Okay, all right, good, all right, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Well, uh, so as not to violate binding future city councils and committing monies to the budget without a referendum, but we do that all the time. He, he's bound to things that we put in our budget, he's a future city council, we have a new city council now, but we have a budget that's committed.
Right, and there are things that are committed in the budget, uh, for example, you do have restrictions when we did, when we did the refunding, as well as when we initially took out the money, we said we would pay with available revenues. Now, with that being said, we cannot bind certain revenues unless we actually take it to a referendum. Uh, so I mean, there is a word crafting, in this case, the, the way I envision this type of account, whether it's set up by resolution or whether it's set up by ordinance, it doesn't, you know.
It might matter to them.
It might matter to them, but, you know, is setting it up so that each year, council would have to make that decision, how much money they wanna put in it, no different than if you're a retirement account.
I see, great.
We determine how much do you wanna put in locked up in a retirement account, and this account would be good for 2022, which would be the time of the next re-nourishment, 'cause we know about every ten years, you need the sand.
Well, I think it's smart planning, frankly, I mean, you know, the beach is not, unless we get really significant global warming and sea level rise, which, you know, hey, we gotta think about that, too.
Sure.
So you might even put more money away, but, um, so, you're gonna have to raise houses.
You might be raising structures.
But I am concerned about the protection part, about the storm protection part, right, because of that fact. And, hmm, how does that fit in, are we gonna put in the monies just for the re-nourishment of the beach part? Are we putting in all the monies for the storm protection part and the re-nourishment part? That's what I wanna know.
That's what I'm hoping for.
And that, well, be careful what you say, because you might have buildings that, because of structural, structural components of that building, um, even though there are engineered, you know.
Beautifully and all that, but.
There's engineered arminence in the, in the beach re-nourishment that was done in ninety-four, it's possible that those buildings may need piling replacement, because pilings, like dental work, only last a certain amount of years, I'm not a structural engineer, but I'll pretend to be one right now.
Nor, nor, are you a dentist?
Thank you.
What a genius.
Fifty percent genius, I think.
Carry on, carry on.
But back to this subject, um, oh, now my mouth hurts after talking about that.
Oh, great.
You know, you don't want something where somebody can say, you need to spend that money for Casa Benita, and, and that's fifty million dollars to replace.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, you, that's private.
Here's what, here's what may, may work best, Audrey, if you would, uh, for now, when you go to draft this out, I think you're probably gonna need, need to keep it as loose as possible with, so far as the definition of beach re-nourishment, if you don't, well, then you will peg yourself in a way where you can't use it where you want to use it.
Exactly.
Or, or you're having to use it in circumstances that aren't appropriate, so, uh, that may be a good place for you to start, anyway. Um, if that's okay with Council?
I would be supportive.
I have a question.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
That will be an ordinance, right? Not a resolution?
Yeah.
Well, that's up to Stephen.
That's what I, I would prefer.
Okay.
And that's what the folks with Hickory Boulevard would prefer.
It's an ordinance.
Consider me a waitress, tell me what you want, and I will prepare it.
Okay, uh, you, you just need staff direction on that? Is that all you need?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, good. Uh, Steve, Stephen, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, what else we got here? Where's, oh, the City Tree Bird. Tree Bird? No, we don't have to vote on that? Okay, uh, I, Item D.
Yes, thank you, we have two vacancies on the, uh, Tree Advisory Committee, and I'd like to thank all of the qualified applicants that came out and ask them to please, if they're not voted in tonight, to come and participate as citizens with the Tree Board, um, we welcome everyone's involvement. Um, but having said that, um, I would like to recommend Mr. Hecker, he is the former Director of Horticulture for the Naples Botanical Garden, and Ms. Theresa Marks, she is a city resident and a university educator, um, in environmental sciences, and I think, having worked with the Tree Committee, these two would be a wonderful addition to the group.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
There's a motion in a second, any other discussion?
Oh, gosh. I'm very supportive, but again, it's, it's procedural, thank you so much. Ben, thank you for recommending those, Janet, I appreciate it.
Obviously residency doesn't matter here.
Uh.
It does.
One.
One of them has to be a resident.
Yeah.
Both of them could be, too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, please.
Okay, uh, there was, uh, there's been a motion in a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta? Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Excellent, yes.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Okay, Jan, do you have anything else?
Yes, please, well, having just brought up the Tree Advisory Committee, I'd like to congratulate them and thank them. Um, this is the third year that they have, uh, received the certification of Tree City USA, and that's a wonderful job. Um, being that I wasn't present for the last council meeting, because I was in Tallahassee for Lee County, um, legislator days, um, I'd like to bring this up tonight, I'd like to find out if there would be council support, um, of asking staff to look into if there's anything that we can do to button down, um, our city requirements and procedures for elections, that we stick within the partisan things, as a city, I think the City of Benita Springs moves forward. I'm not interested in looking backward on this case, but wanna make sure that the election in two years is a, a nonpartisan election.
Mayor, uh, Councilwoman, Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I was just talking to the city manager about this today, surprise, surprise, you know, if, as long as we keep, and it, we, we based our choice to move it to January on finances, but really, this is a much bigger issue about representative government and more loftier goals than money. And my opinion is that we should go back to, I was elected in March, uh, back to having a nonpartisan municipal election, we can have all our referendum issues we come up with, um, in the March, we have our own election, because if you continue having it during presidential preferential primaries, you're always gonna have a partisan election. It'll be a Democrat partisan, a Republican partisan, you're always gonna get that partisan feel, you probably have less of that if we have our own election.
Uh, to that end, why don't we do this? I hope you brought enough for everyone. Come up here, I need to ask you a question, uh, so we can get out of here, um, not that I'm in a hurry. Uh, but, but listen, why don't we start with Janet's suggestion, why don't we, the, first of all, why don't we get our city attorney to tell us exactly what that means in the charter, and, and how enforceable, what it actually means, what can actually be done, be done under the guise of nonpartisan or partisan, so that we all get a better understanding of what that means, who can advertise, who can say this, who can say that, and then.
I'd be willing to have her bring that back to us at another time.
Exactly, and, and, and once you get all that together, once you get all that together and we get a better understanding of that, and if there's anything else we may wanna do, well, then we can figure it from there, but at least get a better understanding, 'cause there was a lot of questions about what you can do, what you can't do, how should you say it, how should you not say it? Why don't we get that straightened out first?
There's two court cases in Florida, 'cause I looked at that back during.
Right.
Your mayor's election, the last time.
I wanna hear it from her, let's get her to go ahead and distill it for us in one nice little neat package, and then she can bring it back to us, and we can all take a look at it.
You're welcome to give me names of cases, though later on, I, I always like to.
Would that be all right, Janet?
I think the conclusion is the best result is to move it to later in the year, away from the partisan thing.
That may, will be the conclusion.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, uh, okay, and anything else, Janet?
Um, just really quick, the, um, Benita Springs Historical Society has, uh, two more events coming up, Friday, March ninth, at seven, at the Lion Center. Um, just really quick, the Benita Springs Historical Society has two more events coming up, Friday, March 9th at 7:00 at the Lion Center. Hank Hendry is gonna speak on Florida's role in the Civil War. Also, the Sammy, Snami, Sammy the Snook contest is going on, watch out for your clues in the banner. And the, uh, hopefully we'll have someone find it and buy Celebrate Benita, where they will announce that and prizes and all that. And then Monday, March 19th at 10:00 a.m. at the Elias Hotel, the Benita Springs Historical Society will have a membership meeting with Speaker David Southall. About everybody here came from someplace else, even the Seminoles. Sounds like, uh, interesting stuff. Uh, for more information, call the Historical Society at 992-6997. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McIntosh, what do you got first?
Yes, sir, I do have two or three things for you. First of all, congratulations to Phil Douglas, named Visionary of the Year for the Astero area. Phil Douglas has been instrumental in creating an Astero that people are very proud of, and he has worked hard at that. So congratulations, Phil, on Visionary of the Year. Number two, sitting in the rear of our room, is the 2012 Love of Benita, Don Thompson. Don has, has worked tirelessly in this community since he was a child, I'm sure, although he was in trouble as a child, as I remember.
Troubled, a troubled youth.
He was a troubled youth. And, uh, but congratulations, Don, certainly well deserved, and thank you for all your work. The first opportunity for the Florida Gulf Coast University Athletic Department to participate in NCAA tournaments. Our Lady Eagles have won the ASUN conference. And we'll.
Go, girls!
Monday night at 7:00 p.m., there'll be the drawing for the brackets, and there's all kinds of concerns about where they'll end up. Probably Memphis or Tallahassee, but stay tuned for, for Monday night, and we'll all be excited. And in blatant self-promotion, I will point out to you that after six years of arduous work, The Art and Science of Leadership by Stephen S. McIntosh.
Can we find it online?
You can find it online at artandsciencofleadership.com. And, uh, the, the most important thing for me is that this cover was designed by our son, Connie, my son, Chris McIntosh. And it's.
And the most important thing for us is it doesn't have your picture on it.
It does on the back. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that's everything.
Thank you very much.
And suitable for framing at your own cost.
Yes, sir.
Peter, do you have anything for us today?
I'm okay.
Good. Martha, what do you got?
Yeah, thank you, guys. Councilwoman Martin mentioned Sammy the Snook for Celebrate Benita, March 31st, and our headliner is gonna be Tanya Tucker. So that's huge, and it's pretty neat, and I think, yeah, it's pretty neat, isn't it? So everybody get there, 2 to 9, be in the park, be with your friends in the community, love each other, find Sammy. And eat good food, eat chili. Okay, uh, next, a musical night of nature with, at the, for crew. Our 60,000 acre preserve just east of Benita Grande that we all want to protect and where our water comes from and everything. Down at Riverside Park, I think this is the third year, and we're really fortunate to have it, and we want to keep it here in Benita Springs. But Kate Apple again with the Catalyst Project, jazz, bluegrass, folk. You'll have a really great time, again, in Riverside Park, fire dancers are gonna be there too, so that's cool. Silent auction, but this is all to protect that land that brings our water. And the mayor's on that executive board, I serve on crew, and you'll, you'll enjoy that. Musical night with nature, and that's March 24th, Saturday, 6:30 to 9:00.
Tickets for sale at the Survey Cafe.
Tickets for sale, we all have tickets for sale. Tickets will be available at the door, $20, and of course, the mayor and I both have tickets for sale. So catch up with him, and then you can catch up with me, right, right, boss?
Gotcha.
All right, um, next, I had a very fruitful meeting with Sheriff's Office Deputy Jeff Fantella with the Sheriff Youth Activities League. And around the county, they put on dances, they have archery competitions. They do some really wonderful things for kids, um, from sev, for the archery is like from 7 to 18. Yes, why would you let your kid have a bow and arrow? But they're in a very safe guided environment. And then the dances, they recommend from like 12 to 15, you know? But I see a lot of kids dancing down at Riverside Park at night unsupervised, and I thought it'd be lovely, and I'll bring this back to council to see if something that you want to do is, under the sheriff's auspices and the guidelines, how they successfully have these dances so that, you know, we don't run into trouble. So those kids don't have to be out in the park, you know, out in the cold and whatever, and then we can provide a, a nice activity for them.
Good for you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then, um, last, there will be a Florida League of Cities Forum, my gosh, let me find it. It's gonna be in Cape Coral, and I'm gonna send you all an email because I don't have it up on my lap, my laptop here right now. March 30th, but it's in Cape Coral, it's on ethics and government. And if you haven't attended one of their seminars, the current president of the league is taking around what she calls League University around the state, and providing seminars for not just new council members, but good, fresh reminders for all of us. So very, I attended this ethics conference when I was at the convention this year, and it was very, very good. Great questions, you'd like it, Audrey. Yeah, great reminder for all of us, thank you.
Good, thank you. You got anything else?
That's it, sir.
Bill, what do you got first, brother?
Only to talk about the library when it comes up under.
Oh, okay.
Report, okay?
Good, well done. Okay, we're gonna go to public comment at this time. Any members of the public wish to speak on any old little thing at all, just come on forward. One at a time, one at a time.
Okay, Rick Steinmeier. I still think that we, you've changed the ordinance, I mean, the charter quite a few times in the last 12 years, and this last one, now, tyranny now is obsessive and unjust government. I mean, that's from the dictionary. We wrote a constitution for this country because we didn't want an oppressive government. And by changing the charter at your will is oppressive to the people that voted for the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this time, please come forward?
Mary Ann Kilgannon. We made this a nonpartisan thing for a reason. And I think you'll have to only look at what's happening to our country to wish that we were that way everywhere. I think we got through 10 years. I guess we're lucky that it didn't happen before this year.
It did.
I guess I didn't know about it then, because I had the delusion that we still had a nonpartisan connection. And I feel really bad, really, really bad. Because now we've descended to the level of the garbage that we're seeing in Washington and in other places that are supposed to be our country. Think about that, that, that issue. There's no other more fundamental than this government right here. This, this is the bottom line. We can't do anything, I mean, God knows, we can't do anything on a national level because they're all sold out. And we can't do anything on a state level because they've all sold out. And so much for the county, we all know what the county's about. We've had blessed information with the county. So, we gotta keep ourselves clean and wholesome and fighting and alive. And the only way we're gonna do it is each one of us doing it, so. Ciao.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Dawn Katsakowski. I wouldn't still be here, but I am because I'm on the agenda tonight. It appears from the green sheet that I am the bad guy, even though it's the city that has wasted taxpayers' hard-earned dollars on something that could have been avoided by just following the city charter. The citizens used their own time and money to try and get all factual evidence to you prior to voting last year on Resolution 11013 and Ordinance 1104. You were lucky to get facts from us, as they were not supplied by your staff. It appears to be the case more often than not that readily available facts, fact-based evidence is often not included in your packets upon which to base your important decisions. The city charter is our law and our possession. Laws ensure our freedom in this country. Why would you consider ignoring any of them? When you think of this country, you can't help but think of the laws that make it what it is. Our charter should be guarded, not reinterpreted. The law has got to be the personal concern of every leader and every citizen. You must uphold it for your city, for your neighbor, and for yourself. For council to look upon the charter, the law as just a set of principles that can be reinterpreted with the blessing of staff is a mistake. It isn't just language printed on a paper. Your oath of office wasn't just something you could recite and then lean back and forget that you swore to uphold the law. The court knows of no rule which allows government to disregard its own laws, and city staff has no legal authority to give permission to ignore them. I will ask once again, please repeal Ordinance 1104, and please put on the next agenda to repeal Resolution 11013 that misinterpreted our charter. There's no excuse that any staff members can come up with that can justify a council's action to reinterpret the charter, the law. The law must be engraved in our hearts and practiced every minute. The law can't even exist unless we are willing to fight every day to preserve it. Please preserve our charter and repeal Resolution 11013 and Ordinance 1104. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Hello again, it's been a long night, gonna be longer. You got a few more things on your agenda. I would ask, I want to respond or talk about, um, well, does the number matter?
No, just talk.
Uh, city's, city attorney's report C. 14. Uh, I would ask that you deny the, um, the franchise for BSU's request for extension. Not outright, but for the time being, while you consider the following things. Uh, we ask that you do not extend, we tag, tag supporters, myself. We ask that you do not extend the franchise with the annual rate increase at BSU's discretion. Require city council approval for any BSU rate increase with BSU furnishing justification for the same. BSU shall reimburse costs to the city for, for an independent review by a qualified utility consultant before allowing any rate increase. We're not recommending Tetra Tech, you have experience with them, at least some of you folks took it to heart. This is supported by BSU's flawed request for a three-year rate increase that was denied by the city council in 2010. That was not, not unanimous, it was a four to two vote with one abstention. And BSU proceeded to apply, to apply the allowed CPI index, I think it was 2.3 or 4% index in present ordinance. No rate increase has been made since the action in 2010. No rate increases projected for BSU's 2012 budget. No CPI index in prior franchise with Lee County prior to 2002 existed. When this was moved from the county as the franchise grantor, there was no language giving BSU an automatic or a CPI rate increase if they so chose. The city negotiated that bomb into the contract. 5.5 million dollar budget bust in 2011, among many other newspaper articles and headlines that have appeared over the past two or three years indicate clearly there is a pattern with this company for not being up to snuff with respect to, with respect to their financial, uh, well, their, their, their very, well-being would be an understatement. Uh, would you, let me continue, please, Mayor, there's a couple of other items here. BSU ended.
I'll give you a little more time, just wrap it up, okay?
I'm going to. BSU ended fiscal year 2011 with a $1.2 million profit. Cash flow has increased and cash equivalents have increased as reported by BSU auditor. The 2011 budget projected a loss of 1.26 million, not unusual, as a, not unusual to come out ahead rather than behind. Uh, as a nonprofit corporation, the 1.2 million profit should rightfully be applied to lower sewer rates, sewer and water rates. I'm gonna skip over the rest of this because we can talk about it another time. However, please, RCS, Resources Conservation Services, I think that's the name of it, Agreement in June of 2006 for Sale of Wastewater for Irrigation Purposes. Any external agreements proposed by BSU shall be approved by the city council before execution. Likewise, the terms of such agreements shall be enforced by BSU. Right now, they are behind the eight ball with respect to charging RCS by contractual agreement, the, uh, the amount that is due them from this company by RCS.
Okay, you have to sum up there.
One other thing, BSU Board of Directors now number nine people. This is excessive and, uh, and should be reduced to a total of five members of the board, gradually phased out with elections, in the case of most city councils and council, and county commissions, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much. Uh, anyone else this time like to speak, come forward, please?
Good evening, Kathy McGrath, and I have some happy news, happy news. First of all, Captain Reridan, if you're watching, she said she informed me when she left that she was gonna go home and put on TV, and that I had to stay here till the end of the meeting, so here I am. You know, we're all happy when someone in our lovely city is recognized, and I was gonna say something about Dawn, but you beat me to it. But what I would like to show you is this. Our own Janet is featured on the cover of this, and one reason I'm so happy about it is Nature Place. A lot of the pictures were taken there, you know that's near and dear to my heart. And Martha, I know you were very instrumental in having, forcing the city to buy that property, so I thank you too. But you know, isn't this great?
Very nice.
Congratulations. Now, Sammy the Snook, there's already been 35 people signed up, so, you know, if you all want to get in on this, there's some nice prizes and everything, so be sure and do that. Thanks for letting me take, pardon me?
Where do you sign up?
City Hall, City Hall, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I know it's late, but I had to say it.
That's okay.
Good night, Captain Reridan.
Anyone else this time like to speak, please come forward? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move right along. We are through public comment to city attorney's report. City attorney. Audrey, what? Audrey?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, first of all, thank you, council. The first item is a requirement when city council adopted Ordinance Number 11-04 that one, what was the exact term, one month following the election, city council would then review the ordinance to determine whether it was in the best interest of the city of Benita Springs, the public and the business community, um, to have this ordinance. And this is the ordinance that relates to amending, um, the zoning code, the zoning portion of our land development code to permit processing of special exceptions and variances by resolution. I'm gonna have this broken up into a few areas. First of all, I want staff to really do whether, I'm kind of Switzerland here. Staff should be the ones saying whether they are supportive or not supportive of the process. But I do want to talk about the law a little bit, and especially some of the comments people made today. And I know staff has some slides, and they'll be popping those slides out. First of all, one of the comments made is that we spent nine months in litigation. We, but, we timely filed our first motion to dismiss against the Political Action Committee, who did not have standing because political action committees don't even have authority to file lawsuits. So that probably violated election code in some other areas that we're not gonna go there today. But, um, it was also because Mr. Boatman requested a continuance. And we were generous, and we were, you know, good lawyers in that granting a continuance, that's what you normally do. So for him to come back and be angry at outside counsel or myself for the time spent when we were granting his request for time is a little disingenuous. Uh, the second thing I want to point out is the cost of litigation, and of course, we got the threat tonight that he plans to either file an appeal or find another client who will have standing, because it is possible for declaratory judgment for somebody to eventually have standing. I don't know what the person needs to articulate, uh, but that, if that issue materializes, we will have to defend it. But let me give him something much more cheaper and less costly, and that's inside our charter. Because I'm gonna agree with Mr. Steinmeier. The charter belongs to the people, and, you know, you do not want a tyranny, and you have not been tyrants. Section 54 of the charter makes it very clear that petition initiatives belong to the citizens and the registered voters. So all of this time could have easily been alleviated had a proper petition initiative been filed in accordance. We have an ordinance saying how to file, they need a 15-word title, they need 75-word block, and they need text. And then they go get their, their citizens to file everything, and they could have done that well within this timeframe that we've been sitting here. So to blame that on the city is not taking responsibility for themselves. Now let me talk about the charter still a little bit more, and that's gonna be in some of the things in the slides, so I'm gonna ask staff, section 10 of the charter, as well as section 27, because the accusation is that we are violating section 27 of the charter. But you don't just read section 27 in of itself, you also need to read the whole charter. And section 10 of the charter, and you can read it up there, says, hey, the powers of the city are to be. the city are to be liberally construed in favor of the city, which means city council, you can make interpretations of your own, um, documents, of your own charter, unless there's something very specific in the charter, and any particular powers that are mentioned in the charter doesn't, it doesn't limit any general power that's been granted in the charter. Okay? So, or by general law. So in this case, special exceptions of resolutions and processing applications is not the same thing as regulating land use and development, which is in section twenty-seven as one of the requirements of an ordinance.
Oh, thank you.
The way I read section twenty-seven, and I think it's probably a very common practice reading, is regulate land use and development would mean something similar to the state statute, which is land development regulations. And a land development regulation is your building code, it's your zoning, it's your development standards ordinance, it's many of your environmental ordinances, um, that are land development code ordinances and are placed in the land development code. Your, how to process code enforcement cases. All of those are land development code. But if you started saying, well, everything is regulating land use and development, what differentiates this from every code enforcement order that comes out? Because of course, that's done by a hearing examiner. Or what differentiates this from a special event permit? Because that's held on a piece of property. It gets to the point that, that's kind of a very extreme reading, but that's up to council. That's it as far as the legal. I've had quite a few attacks, which I think are inappropriate. I think it was nice to get a couple compliments, too. But at the same time, I want you to read your charter, because I do not see in the charter where it says you need to process special exceptions and variances by ordinance. And I think a plain reading of the charter, it's not in there. Now that, with that being said, you can certainly do so. If council wants to do it by ordinance, there is no prohibition on you doing that. And if you want to do it, that's fine, but you are not violating your charter in however you wish to interpret it. Now with that, I'll let staff go as to the actual-
Good, thank you. Well, I think you've certainly heard very, very clearly from your city attorney about the legal issues with regards to the city charter. What I want to do is spend very little time on, and, and we've heard, we've heard the term fact-based. Okay, well, let's, let's talk about being factual tonight. First off, this is an economic development issue, in my opinion, and I've worked in a lot of places in economic development for some thirty years now. This is an economic development issue. We don't want to be just competitive in this market. We want to be better than everyone else. And we can do that by streamlining our processes, by working with our customers, and I will tell you that an economic developer in another city in Lee County is envious over the fact that this council has done this for this city, because they can't get it done in their city. And so what I wanted to do is go through very briefly, and we've put it up on the screen, council has it in hard copy. For special exceptions and variances, and the issue being resolution versus ordinance, okay? The application, the staff review, cutoff time, all of those things are the same whether you do it by ordinance or whether you do it by resolution. All right, next one. When you talk about public notice for a resolution or an ordinance, it's the same. No change, it's the same. All right, let's go to the next one. Now, in terms of public comment and their opportunities to comment on development, okay? They are the same, and let me explain that. You will appear before the zoning board, and you have an opportunity to be heard at that public hearing in front of the zoning board for a resolution and an ordinance. You also appear in front of the city council. Now some may think, well, because there's two, there's, there's two readings at the council, there's two opportunities to talk. The fact of the matter is, there's only one opportunity to talk. So you have one opportunity to talk under a resolution, and at the second reading, you have an opportunity to talk about the ordinance. So structurally, procedurally, effects on the residents, all right? There is no damage, there is no difference between an ordinance and a resolution. So why do it? The difference is outside the process, and that is time. And I will tell you that developers across the board, okay, believe in the three Ps of development. They want it to be painless, predictable, and profitable. This process, established under eleven oh four, does that in spades. The difference between a resolution and ordinance in terms of time of processing is thirty to forty days. When time is money, that means something to a developer. We would recommend staff-wise that you stay the course on eleven oh four, because you're gonna save the developers' time, and there's no hurt to anyone else. There's still the opportunity for plenty of public input to your decision-making. Thank you.
Okay, uh, council, uh, do you have any questions of staff? Do you have any questions of staff? Questions? Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Um, Audrey, uh, former council, uh, councilman Pat McCord indicated that this was strictly an economic development issue, but it also applies to residential properties, too, the variances and the special exemptions, correct?
Well, certainly variances, that's your bread and butter, where people want to build a house and they need to obtain a variance. That would have been the monk variance tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Would have explained that pretty well. Uh, so it does apply to that as well as commercial properties, as well as industrial properties, horticultural waste as an industrial use.
Well, Stephen, I think that's a good point, too, because, I mean, it's, when you use the term developer, that's fine, but developer is anybody who comes before city council. That, that's somebody who's, who's got a problem with their swimming pool and, or uh, being too close, or somebody who's, uh, who's got a piece of property that's just a little bit, it's, it's a legal non-conforming, and so they need to change that a little bit. That thirty days means a lot to them, too. They're gonna pay for that thirty days. They're, they're gonna pay for that. That's all there is to it. And I, and I think it's just, it's just a more efficient way of doing it. And that thirty days, most of that thirty days is on the back end of it. It's on the back end of it. When you can't do something after, that's like, it's, I mean, you can buy a handgun quicker, right? I mean, you know, the, there's a cooling off period for some reason with it. For a special exception or a variance, I mean, why have a thirty-day cooling off period at the end of that?
Right.
I can see it, for, I can make an argument for the regulatory part, uh, because, you know what? When you do something, a regulation, staff needs time to implement it, uh, the public needs to, in time to get used to the, the fact that this is the new law, this is the new regulation. But something for a special except for a variance, I, I, I just don't see the harm. And, and why not just say, you know what? We've given opinion, this is a ministerial function that we've chosen to keep for ourselves. We could have well given it to staff. We could give this ministerial administrative function to you guys, and there would be no vote. There would be no public comment. There would be no notice. There would be nothing. We could do that. We have the power to do that. We have the ability and responsibility to do that sometimes, and we choose to do that. But when we keep it for ourselves, why does that have to automatically fall into order? So it makes no sense at all. Uh, and you have a comment?
I do have a comment.
Oh, yeah, Steve has one more thing, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and Audrey, just for review, why, in terms of the lawsuit, did the judge, uh, uh, favor the city?
Uh, there is a, uh, thing where, in order to bring a lawsuit such as a declaratory action, you have to have standing. And standing means the person has to articulate an injury that is special to them. You can't just be a member of the public and articulate that injury. And, um, same thing, you can't be a political action committee. Then, the political action committee was interesting because we had two reasons there. Now in that case, Mr. Boatman, after he read the motion to dismiss, said, ah, city's right, never said the city was right, I'll file an amended and I'll, I'll give a substitute plaintiff. And that's where he had a substitute plaintiff. I do know that based on the expenditure report, Ms. Konikowski gave ten dollars to the PAC. So she wasn't the major person on that part, but, um, according to their finance expenditure, so I'm sure that they're correct, that, uh, and then she took over the lawsuit after that, and then Mr. Boatman asked for continuances after the city filed its second motion to dismiss. So it was on standing. Now, as lawyers, um, people always say, we want to get to the merits, we want to get to the merits. And I, you know, I hear that. And I understand what people are saying, but at the same time, the, the rules of civil procedure, they want you, and you are required to file your motions to dismiss before you file an answer. So by the rules and following the rules, because everyone wants us to follow rules, and I think we all agree for that, we were following the rules, and you have to file the motion to dismiss. If the judge decided to either reserve ruling or rule against the city, we would then file our answer. Uh, so we were following in accordance with what the rules are. And these are the same rules where people sometimes get upset when, um, do, due process issues or something, when it's a criminal is let off on a technicality. Well, those technicalities are the constitution. So same thing here, you cannot bring a lawsuit, and it's in the constitution, too, unless you have standing, you have something, a just, I can't even pronounce it, just, justiciable issue. That's a hard one to say. And we all learned about that in con law class. Just on this, again, uh, the charter is very clear, but there is, the charter's great because the charter does have recourse for citizens. It's always been in the charter. I kind of feel like the good witch, you know, if I told her you could always have made that wish, uh, they could certainly do so, because it's in the charter, and there is a remedy.
Okay, and Audrey, final question is, uh, the mayor used the word harm. Changing the ordinance to a resolution, has any harm come to the city for any reason whatsoever?
There has been none on the basis of the cases that have come to the city. Um, there has been citizen input during some of the cases. So, I mean, there have been cases where people did come, so they did see the Red Sea, they did see the ad, the advertisement, they did articulate where they had issues, but it would have been the same if it had been an ordinance. And I just want to correct one minor detail, and that is, in addition to the timeframe, there is one less advertisement. We have a, a thing in our charter, and it requires, after you adopt an ordinance, after everything is done, you still have to advertise it one more time, even though nobody can do anything on that advertisement. They have a right to do something based on the adoption, but not on that particular advertisement. So that is something in the charter. It's still in the charter, right? It, it's one of those charter requirements that does cost money. It's one additional cost.
But again, to me, on a regulatory basis, that makes sense. You're letting everybody, hey, we, we changed this law, so you all better be aware of it.
But it's also on special exceptions and variances-
If you do it by ordinance.
If you do it by ordinance, correct, sir.
Exactly. Okay, and you had, did you have something else?
Just a, a comment, I thought that this slide was very, very informative. I appreciate it.
Uh, Martha?
Thanks, Ben. Um, thank you. It's pretty informative, and we've cut back the time before we even changed it between resolution and ordinance. We'd made the time quicker, 'cause we were interested in doing that. Um, my, okay, see, we've been here four hours. If we had had those three resolutions on there, how much longer would we have been here?
Probably ten to fifteen minutes.
Right. Thank you for illustrating my point. Because can you hear three cases in ten to fifteen minutes? Five minutes a case? Without people being of an opportunity to ask a question, public comment being heard?
Counsel, when you set it up, what you said was you would hold the hearings tonight, and if there was something that was complicated, you would move it, continue it to your daytime meeting of March nineteenth.
Well-
In this case, we had to move it to March nineteenth for advertisement.
This is my concern. Here's my concern, is we used to hear these at zoning meetings, okay? Which was a separate time set aside so all the parties could gather instead of having all these other issues here. And I found that for myself, much easier to focus on, on the topic at hand instead of having so many topics tonight, we've had a big meeting tonight, um, and be able to focus and ask the questions, or not ask the questions, um, that need to be addressed. This way, I feel that there's pressure, let's get the heck out of the meeting, okay, adopt it, adopt it, adopt it. Um, you know, the, and there is that, that pressure that's there, that, you know, we want to move out of here, gosh, he's talking too much. Well, you know, sometimes these cases need to be looked at. For instance, when Mr. Cartwright came in, and he wanted his horticultural waste deal gone in his neighborhood, um, and by special exception, you could have granted a wood chipping operation that would have been very disrupted and light industrial. Okay? That is important enough that I don't sit here and spend five minutes on that case. But what would happen also, because that would be under your item, city manager's gonna have to sit here two hours. You know, so if we, what, could we move this to the zoning hearing day?
Well, and actually, it doesn't matter with eleven oh four-
I think it makes more sense.
Eleven oh four doesn't set your schedule. We can set your schedule that they're all heard on the day of your zoning hearing. I mean, that's not a problem, as long as we have a sufficient advertisement time. So if you don't want to have them on the, your evening meeting, you certainly can move it, um, to, I guess, twelve days, because it'll always be twelve days difference, um, if that's what council's pleasure is. When we set up your schedule every year around October, I bring a schedule, that certainly could be council's choice.
Okay, here's my other comment, mayor. I think we should put this up for a ballot referendum, and this is why I tell you, say, because if we're asking the citizens to go out and petition it themselves to put it on a ballot referendum, and the, and the citizens overwhelmingly approve, we just approve to change it back to what it was, um, then we just burden the, the citizens with having to change something back to what they've already voted on before. So I think we should put it up as a ballot referendum if they, and the parties go at it. Oh, it's not good, it's good. On the merits of whether having a resolution, not on whether it follows the charter, but on the merits of whether, do we want to do this by resolution or by ordinance? And then they can put that in the charter, and we're all happy ducks, you know? Because, uh, the voters will have verified what they want, and that's who we serve, so I'm for that.
Then at least there would be something in the charter, instead of people telling you to look at the charter, and there's nothing in the charter.
I think that would be the way to go. And then we won't have this issue hanging out there for four years with people using it in some partisan election, so.
And you know how well that worked.
You know how that, well, it works, yeah. That doesn't work well, and it's not good.
Didn't work, did it?
You want to have peace in the kingdom.
Go ahead, Bill.
Martha, you're right.
God, I love that.
Okay.
But the, by the same token, uh, the last vote was for, wasn't here, so-
It's in the backup.
It was four to three.
Yes, sir.
And I like to vote yes as many times as I possibly can, working with the council, but there are points like this one. Now, does everybody have the charter tonight here? Anybody, yep, okay. Well, chapter twenty-seven says specific things. And if, if it didn't say this, I would have been with the other side. But it does say this. And until this council or any other body understand that, if we don't, if we can't not, we shouldn't be interpreting the charter, we should be, because the people, like, uh, Mr. Grant was here before, he was on that, or he said specifically the same thing, we should follow the charter. Is he still here?
Mary Ann's still here, she was-
Mary, okay. Well, anyway, the point I want to make is, that's the reason why I did not support the, the Dubai variance and whatever. Uh, so, it's kind of, it's kind of frustrating to sit over here, and we have something that was given to us, that was approved, and now you're suggesting, Audrey, that we, we, the people, can go out and get petitions. Certainly we can do it, we probably can do it quickly, if there's enough of us out there that believe that the charter is what we're supposed to follow. But it's very frustrating from, from my perspective to have to sit and listen to interpretations of the charter when we have it right here in front of us. And all it does is add animosity, anxiety, all the negative things that, that we have to go through in our daily lives with our families and all that. So all I'm, all I'm suggesting is that if it's possible, and it has to be from the prevailing side, to change it, uh, as I understand it, one of the four has to say that we'd like to revisit this, isn't that the way it works?
No, it's, it's, it's up again for a new vote right now.
Oh, oh, okay, well, in that case-
Nothing to do with prevailing.
We need four votes to abide by the charter. And if it goes the other way, you're forcing, you're forcing the public to do and create a situation that will go on, and if that has to be the way it is, with the, the four votes say it, we're gonna leave it the way it is-
And I'm forcing the-
More aggravation.
Uh, well, I don't want to aggravate you, but at the same time, you're saying, I want to force them to follow section fifty-four of the charter, which says it's reserved to the voters, which means the voters are not the city council.
Right.
The voters are the people who are in there saying, this is what the charter says. The charter, and you all have, I gave it to you, you have copies of it.
Yes, we do.
And we also have the slide tonight, so that, you know, you have it there.
Mm-hmm.
The part that, uh, Bill is pointing to, because the only part that conceivably could even be considered the part that we're talking about, is, uh, acts that have to be done by ordinance, um, is regulate land use and development. And quite frankly, I think the term regulate land use and development is the same meaning as a land development regulation. I think that's a fair interpretation, it's one done by pretty much every court, every person who is against cities, there is some wonderful websites out there, and, um, Ms. Bellflower, another attorney, has a great website, a blog, where she, she, you know, she's, she's to teach you how to fight governments. And she explains in there, it's a zoning ordinance, it's a sign ordinance, building ordinance. And she explains in there, it's a zoning ordinance, it's a sign ordinance, building ordinance. It is not when you have a specific application as it relates to a piece of land. That's an actual zoning case. It's different.
Well, whatever, it's clear to me.
Okay. Janet?
Thank you. I'm going to continue moving forward with the resolution process that we've started. As the city manager stated, it's a, it's a good tool to have for economic development, and all of us have pledged that downtown is our major process through our strategic plan, that this is what we want to see happen. And we're not talking about when we call it developers, these major developers. We're talking about mom and pops, where thirty days makes a big difference to somebody who's trying to start a business. And that's what we're trying to attract and entice to come to our downtown area. So for me, this is, this is what I need to support.
And I agree with Janet. I think, and it's not tyranny, it's responsibility. You know, we have a responsibility. It says in the Charter, you have a responsibility. The council has responsibility to interpret the provisions of the Charter. And when you interpret one provision in the Charter, you just can't take one provision of the Charter and interpret it. You have to interpret a document as in its entirety. It has to be consistent throughout the document. And because of the fact that the city council has the ability to give special exceptions and variances to these people right here, we can do that without a Charter amendment, without anything. We can just do that. You take that, we don't even want it. There will be no vote after that, there's no anything. If they can do it without an ordinance, city council can't do it without an ordinance? That makes no sense. Therefore, it's, it makes no sense, and the plain reading of it ought to be that you can do it by regulation, or by resolution, or ordinance. I don't think that you can make much more of a more logical argument than that. Whether or not you want to do that, I think if you want to do that, and you want to cut some time off that, and be business friendly, and put our money where our mouth is, and do all that, that's up to you. I think it's a great thing. I don't think there's, I just don't think there's any legal room to wiggle there. It's, that's the way it ought to be. Yes, Steve?
I'm going to make an assumption here, and I apologize if it's a poor assumption, but I would guess that the only people in this room who really care about whether it's an exception or an ordinance are the people in this room right now. The issue, I think, was brought forward because, in all fairness to the people who live on Hickory Boulevard, it had the potential for disrupting the quality of life that they cherish, and that we all cherish. I would have, at one point, before it really got to be so abstract and constitutionally driven argument, I would have put a, I would have put forward a motion that said, let's continue the ordinance, but let's exempt Hickory Boulevard from that ordinance. I think, and it's continuing my assumption, I think if you put that forward to the people who live on Hickory Boulevard, they would say, okay, you know, let's get out of this legal issue, let's figure out what really works, and let's see if we can create some economic development, some economic growth, but protect that portion of our city where the people have the biggest issue dealing with this. And maybe we're beyond that now. But I didn't see anybody from any place else in the city coming forward in those kinds of numbers, saying, we have a real problem with the Charter. So if I was, if I was going to make a motion, and I will, so we can bring it forward, I would, I am motioning to continue with the ordinance, but exempt the people, the area of Hickory Boulevard from this ordinance. That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
May I ask?
I'm going to make a second so we can have a conversation about it. Yes, you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see us going back to zoning meetings to address these, instead of having them at meetings like this evening. Because it was, you know, you pay attention to, and you didn't have people waiting, consultants going back and that kind of thing. Oh, my God, they've got to go back to the East Coast, because I think we have one here tonight, and we have to go back to the East Coast. She already went back to the East Coast.
And Carl, we can give staff instruction to that effect. Okay.
But, you know, I'm almost there on variances, but I still have a problem with special exceptions because of what can happen. And I, while I'd love to protect beautiful little Hickory Island, I'd like to have protection throughout the city for like my neighborhood. So you could exempt my neighborhood while you're at it. Where, you know, where's that stop? I understand, I'm, I hear you, Audrey, but I'm not feeling, maybe, you know, it's an emotional issue for me.
Well, let me ask you a question. How is it protection?
Well, let's say my neighbor has a shed that's about thirty-five feet tall next to their twelve-foot house. Do they have to get a special exception to have that? No, they're just allowed to have that now. But hopefully, we were going to rewrite chapter four to allow a special exception.
No, when it comes to between the resolution and ordinance, how is protecting, how does your property get protected more with an ordinance than a resolution?
Okay, well, one is, what I'm suggesting is that we go to zoning meetings again, so that there, we actually have a full hearing process.
Not arguing that.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
But the other one is the Charter. So I'm still hung up on the Charter issue, and I think that we should bring it to a ballot referendum, so we're not hanging out here for six months.
Carl, did you have something?
Or two years or something. And I think that'd just be the smart thing to do politically and constitutionally.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a thought, as council's talking about perhaps going to zoning meetings and having all these things going to your zoning meeting. I would like for us, again, in the interest of time, for those people who are bringing projects through, that if time is absolutely of the essence, we would still like, staff would like the flexibility to bring it forward at a regular council meeting, rather than your zoning meeting, if time is an issue. If not, then we could do the zoning meetings. But the problem is, depending on the dates involved, you could be adding time to the development review process. And so I just wanted to kind of throw that out for your thoughts.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor?
And you can have that, we can have that argument at any time, yeah.
Well, we cut back the, we cut back the timing to accommodate for people's issues. And then we, then, you know, council decided to go to resolution and went to court. And I upheld going to court because I'm defending, you know, the majority's opinion. But, you know, how much time you want, you know, you also have to give time to the public to be able to weigh in on matters. I certainly, you know, I spent all day in a stakeholders' meeting on economic development with, you know, the state. I'm for it, but I'm also for the people who live in our city, the comp plan and the vision that they created in the Charter and in our comp plan. So, hey, and our land use and all, blah, 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 all that other stuff.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Before we call, before we call a question?
The motion's to continue with an ordinance with exception to Little Hickory Island, where I would amend the ordinance to have any special exceptions and variances also to be done by ordinance.
And you know, you have no problem with making that division on Hickory Boulevard?
I have, well, two points. One, you already made that division with tree removal permits. You require tree removal permits on Little Hickory Island on single-family residential.
Gotcha, so there's no staff objection of, or complaint about what that is. Okay, good. There's a motion in a second. Does everyone understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in other words, it's to continue with it by resolution, special exception and variance, except for on Hickory Island.
And I'll bring an ordinance back to you, make that amendment, that passes.
Little Hickory Island. Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
I'm sorry, no, I'm not there yet.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, what's next on here? Consider the limitations for banners. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and, thank you, a few seconds as I get myself a little organized here. This is to consider extending the resolution. We do it every year on code enforcement, suspending their enforcement for banners, and temporary signs. This came about mainly because of the economy, to allow businesses to have during the weekend the ability to have a sign up there. They have to take it down on Monday. There is a change, based on the green sheet, to the actual resolution. Based on what Bill Clark, I did modify, where previously I said code enforcement would have to have the consent of the landlord. I now have modified that clause to say, nothing in this resolution is intended, nor shall be construed as interfering with or superseding in any way the continuing right of a property owner to prohibit at any time on placing of private signs or banners upon his property, regardless of whether or not city has given a registration or given the permit through this. And that was revised language by Bill Clark. It works out fine. Staff was fine with it. Don't think we're particularly enamored with having this exception. I mean, we could always modify the sign ordinance to allow it permanently, but I do think it's a stopgap method. It's, that's up to council's pleasure. I will tell you, today I was looking at wacky inflatable arm guy from Family Guy, because it seems so applicable.
John, or?
Carl. Carl, Carl Swin.
You're Carl, right?
City manager.
Carl, that's John, right, John and Carl.
Do you have something to say, John? Okay. Thank you. Staff is recommending that you extend this. I think, I think twenty-twelve is going to be a turnaround year for the economy, and I think especially for us. But I think it's early to make changes like this. We'd recommend that you extend it for another year. Take a look at it one more time next year. Could be an entirely different circumstance. I'm not in favor of implementing this permanently. I think it has adverse impacts at times to the aesthetics of the city. And so I think we need to be careful about that. I think a one-year extension would be appropriate. That would be our recommendation. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your motion? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I know that we talked with John Spear when he was here, talked about the aesthetics of the city. And it's, some of the stuff's getting kind of tacky out there, so, you know, I don't know how we can better allow them to do banners and make it look nice. You know, people are building these different kind of frames and poles, and it's just not looking great. Reason why we have it, but I think that does a lot for economic development, too, is to make your property look great.
Okay. Any other comments, counsel? All right, is your motion in a second to extend it for one year, is that correct? Okay, good. Roll call.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Sir.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, what's next? Audrey?
Next is to review the petition from Benita Springs Utilities for an amendment to extend the franchise term.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure on that? I'll make a motion to go ahead and move this along. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, Stephen. Any other discussion? And through that process, we can, we can talk about some of these intricacies. All right? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye. Aye, I'm sorry.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Yep.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, you got something else for us?
Yes. And with the Benita Citizens for Responsible Government, again, based on rules, we have thirty days from when the judgment is finalized.
I make a motion that we don't seek cost on that.
Thank you.
Second. There's, we have a motion in a second, not to seek cost on that. Hello?
Yeah, whoa, not to pay cost, not to seek cost, right. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Thank you, aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, you got anything else for us, Audrey?
I do just one really tiny thing, and that is, just to let you know, Senate Bill six ninety-two, Carl and I worked on that today. It was the revised language, I believe, the final. I haven't looked at the final since the final. But the one o'clock language did have it narrowly defined, so it does not affect city of Benita Springs. This is where we would have had a city possibly enveloping right onto our city.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Carl, it's all yours, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I'd like to present to council is the recommendations as a result of the compensation study. We have supplied the information to you in the green sheets, supplied to you late last week. The key here is, this is the results from a study that was conducted by our consultant with regards to where do we stand with regards to our compensation in our employees. We suspected that there were probably a number of employees who were underpaid, a number of employees who were overpaid, and that turned out to be the case. Our recommendation tonight is to do a one-time adjustment to bring people up to the minimums of the new pay ranges, number one. Number two, to make a market adjustment, to place people at the close, closer to the appropriate point on the pay ranges that they should be in. And then the third thing is, we're recommending a two percent across the board, because frankly, we've got a great number of employees here who have done just a yeoman's job in service to our residents for a number of years without any compensation increase. And we feel that this is a morale issue, as well as a fairness and equity issue, and we would so recommend.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Steve?
Just a quick comment to Mr. Pierce's question. Ron, I have looked at the protocol. I think the protocol is correct. I think it's valid, and it does, it does do what council asked the city staff to do, and that was to clearly research and compare salaries internally and externally. I think it does that. Just, I'm just saying that because you asked a question. Other than that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, just for clarification, too, my recommendation is for the fifty percent market number at two hundred and nine.
So your recommendation is fifty percent market number at two hundred and nine?
Correct. Right. That's covered, more than covered by savings that we've already made.
So far as, when does that become effective?
We would like to make it effective April first.
April first.
Carl, you had mentioned in a conversation that we had that we could, you know, conceivably justify this because we've saved money in other areas. Could you outline those other areas, please? Yes. Well, first off, I think the justification is through the work that Katie Bush did in terms of where we stand with other comparable municipalities and governments that we might actually lose people to. In fact, we just lost somebody this week, unfortunately. But in answer to your question, council member, what we did was, we saved, now, these are annual savings. We said, we're going to save two hundred thousand dollars a year by renegotiating the CH Two-Mill contract. That contract's already been signed at that new amount, so that two hundred thousand dollars is there. The second thing is that we refinanced our debt earlier this year for a savings of three hundred thousand dollars a year. However, of that three hundred thousand, only fifty thousand is applicable to the general fund, all right? So we can't count the rest of that, so we're up to two fifty if you're looking at a cumulative number. And then for the third thing is that we just made a change in our health insurance, and we anticipate that based on that, the city will be saving somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so that brings us to the two seventy-five to three hundred thousand dollar mark in savings to fund this recommendation. So we've got an annual recurring savings to cover an annual recurring expense that we're recommending.
Okay, good. Do you have anything else for him?
No, I mean, it's apples to apples, year to year, year to year, year to year, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good, good. Any other questions? Janet?
No, no question.
I have some.
Bill?
Carl, I'm on the page, it's marked in yellow.
That one, okay.
And you've done it by position without names. What I'm concerned about is, first of all, we're doing it mid-year. I understand the savings which you shared with us and shared with me. However, are you telling me that a person is going to go up twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars?
If that's what the number says, yes, sir. And now, and I'll tell you why. It's because that person is horribly underpaid for the responsibilities that person now has.
I understand that, and I agree with you, but that's a dramatic amount of money even in the public sector. Here's another one for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And there's, it's not, there's not a clear, to me, amounts to two hundred and eight thousand, I think, is the total number pushed to the city.
Yes, sir. Under the fifty percent mark, yes, sir.
And where will they fall in these new pay scales? Is it the proposed midpoint? Is that where they're going to wind up?
No, sir. No, sir. They will fall, it depends on where they're located on the new pay. new pay, uh, the new pay range, um, right now. So there are people who will not be getting a market adjustment.
How many were there?
Okay, now I'm going to have to ask for help, so...
There she is.
Yeah, Meg's there. We have, I believe we have twenty-one employees that are going to be, for tier one, would be, have to be brought up to the minimum of the new pay ranges. Is that correct?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty-five of them for market adjustment.
All right, twenty-five for market adjustment, and this is on the fifty percent, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And forty-nine for across the board.
Right.
Well...
Anything else, Bill?
Uh, well, just the fact, I understand why Carl did it, or did it, you recommended this, however, I think some of the, the numbers are dramatic, and it doesn't happen like that in the private sector.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I would just, if I might respond, first off...
Yeah, sure, sure, good.
First off, council member, I absolutely agree. Some of these numbers are absolutely dramatic. You, you look at some of these and, and you're frankly shocked.
Yep.
But, under these new pay ranges, if we lost that person, we'd have to bring them in at a number of reaching that anyway. So, I mean, even if we started them at minimum. So, we're talking about people who have had additional responsibilities, they've had promotions and taken no increases, and I suspect that doesn't happen in the private sector, okay? That when they move up, when they've got additional responsibilities, you know, they're able to negotiate increases along the way. That has not been the case with some of our employees, unfortunately.
Okay. Uh, Janet, and then I'll come back to Martha.
Without a doubt, I support the city manager's recommendation. Are these salary ranges, this is why we had the study, they're, they've been askew for years, and our, our, when you work closely with our staff, and they're working hard and wearing many hats, and it also states that, you know, we've been good stewards, um, the staff has been the ones to find the money to make things happen for us. They make us look good, so this is our giving back.
It's not, it's, excuse me, Ben, it's, it's not a matter of the quality of the work that the people do. I have observed that for many years, and there's people sitting here I respect, and everybody, but the point is that there are some things that the dollars just get out of whack, and do I, do I agree that there's a, it's timed for an increase? Yes. It's the size of the increase, not the, not the, not against any employees, please.
You get it, you get it. Understand that. Martha?
Thank you. Well, I would have wanted to increase it more, okay? I'd like to ask the question. Um, it's sixty percent, I think you asked me, I said seventy-five percent. For God's sakes, we can't lose these people, and we are, have a problem because we've lost somebody who is rated on here as a superstar and a master, okay? Who's rated on here performing their job way above and beyond. We'll be having a going-away party for him tomorrow because we gave him a BS today. I missed it today? Oh, my God. Okay, we'll have to call him on his cell phone, get together. All right, because, uh, we helped him in his education, he now, now has a BS degree, and is going to work at Naples for fifteen thousand dollars more. Split the baby on the person who's getting twenty-nine thousand, keep that valuable employee, and we could have kept the person. I think that would have been a great solution. Call him up, tell him to come back. Anyhow, um, uh, mind you, how much money have we saved that the employees didn't get a COLA for the last, uh, was it forty-two minutes, three years, three and a half years, they didn't get a pay increase? Um, how much money did we save? Have we calculated that? Well, I'd like to see that number, just so when people ask you questions, you can say, we saved that amount, amount of money. Also, I want to say that I've been here for six years, I haven't had a COLA increase either, so I've actually had money deducted out of mine. Uh, I make less than when I started, so, um, thanks. That's about it, but I support this whole heartedly, would support more if I could.
Steve? Steve?
Yes, uh, Bill, just, uh, your, maybe this is not a good analogy, but, uh, I know Audrey knows, uh, my son-in-law works for Google. He's been with Google for four and a half years, and he just recently got a hundred and forty thousand dollar, uh, raise. Not a promotion, a raise, uh, because of his performance. Um, does travel to India a lot and all that, but that's beside the point. Uh, but he does, he does a good job, and they're paying him. The other thing is, I, I just want to say, you know, after being on council for two years and, and working with the staff here, uh, I have never, never in my life, and I've been through a lot of, or the military and, and in the hospital world, I've been through a lot of organization, I have never seen a team spirit like I've seen here in the City of Benita Springs.
I agree.
They're the best, and, uh, looking at a couple, I, they, you know, it doesn't make any difference what day, uh, time, they're always there for you, they're willing to work. I will, go near Audrey's office, is there anything you need? Can I help? Uh, and, and I'm looking in the back room there. Some of those people are just absolutely fantastic. Uh, kudos to them, they deserve it.
Yeah. Uh, I just want, just, just, just add something there. Uh, when you think about, it does seem like a, a lot of money to spend right now, a bit of chunk of change, but if this inequity's been here for four years...
We saved money.
We, we saved a lot of money here at City of Benita Springs, and we were able to, 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 to do the things that we were able to do because of them, and, and, and a low rate, and it's time to, to make right by it. Uh, we'll make it work. Uh, do we have motion?
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's motion in a second, and that is at the fifty percent level, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is that all the information you need on that? Okay. Any other discussion?
And we don't get a raise.
Huh?
And we don't get a raise.
We don't get nothing.
We don't get nothing, okay.
Cookies are in the other room.
Mr. Mayor, for, for the record...
Yeah.
This does not cover council, it does not cover the city manager, it does not cover the city attorney, and it does not cover five employees who are already above the maximums of the new ranges.
Okay.
All right.
Are they at the executive level?
Pardon me?
Are they at the executive level?
No, not all of them, no.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, what else you got for us? We're on, we're on, on stress.
Sorry, Mayor, I know we're on a roll here. Um, all right, stormwater master plan, um, I'd ask for Daryl to come up. Um, the master plan was delivered to you recently, a few months ago. We were looking at some, uh, of the options we have available to meet the new state standards, and, uh, I'd like for Daryl to pick that up and chat about that a little bit. Daryl?
Over the past couple of years, the city has been involved in a couple of separate but, uh, related water quality programs, one being the storm, uh, water, uh, water master plan update, and the other is the basin management action, action plan, or BMAP as we refer to it. The, this is required under the, uh, N-PDES and other acronym permit that we have, uh, through DEP. Currently, we are seeing the two programs coming together. The phase-two master plan recommended sixteen potential water quality projects, and at the same time, the state DEP is, uh, pressing us to answer how we're going to address our, uh, nitrogen removal for the next five years, and, uh, that, uh, total is thirteen hundred and thirty-one pounds.
Quit using fertilizer. Am I telling you right, or what?
I want to ask you two questions here.
Yeah.
You ready? Uh, how long's your presentation going to be?
Basic.
And, and is this something that's time-sensitive?
No.
Can we move this to the next meeting?
We're going to move this to next meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, is that, is that all right with everyone?
Poor Daryl, he's been here all night.
No, Daryl, Daryl's heartbroken, I can tell.
Shh.
Thank you, man.
I know, but you know, we would have thought about that, the, beginning of the meeting.
For seeing anybody disappear from the, from that pass of my life.
I don't want to hear it.
Okay, uh, well, you got one right there. Okay, uh, is there anything else?
Next item, yes. A brief update on the beach renourishment project from John.
And we tried to, in this green sheet, give you a very brief summary of the status of the beach project that we've been working on for quite a few years now with our partners at the county. There is only one item that we are asking for direction on, and that is, staff has, is become more comfortable with the financial analysis that we've gotten from our partners at the county. We are now making a recommendation that we, uh, not pursue any further the idea of what has been referred to as a private assessment, the MSTU option on the stormwater portion of the beach project.
All right.
The funds are tot, is, at, at this point, in the budget totally to cover not only the design and permitting, but the construction without going to assessment, and we're comfortable that the portion that would have been subject to the assessment is small enough so that we can think about not pursuing that. We're looking for some kind of consensus on that.
Uh, uh, somebody make?
Yeah, I might.
Okay, uh, do you need a motion?
There it was.
You got a motion, a second?
Hello.
A motion in a second to, uh, to approve the recommendation to go ahead and not do any assessments, this particular...
For this project.
This project right here. Uh, any other discussion? I thought not. Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, that one's difficult, was it?
Just a brief editorial note, that was, uh, council did the right thing, the prudent thing by asking us to look into it. We didn't know how the numbers were going to lay out, so we were covering all the bases. We're much more comfortable now, thank you.
Good deal, good deal, and well done, John. Well done.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, uh, what else you got?
You're a TV person, you need to break.
The library issue is...
We got it going, go ahead, go ahead.
The library issue is the next thing that I want to, uh, try to get some direction and consensus from. We copied for you the presentation that the county staff made to the Board of County Commissioners at the budget workshop. The biggest question that county staff was asking of the county commissioners was whether or not county commissioners would entertain during this budget cycle the possibility of making adjustments to the library millage rate. From the county staff's point of view, they need an adjustment to what was a temporary reduction in the millage rate so that they can get back to a more healthy operating, uh, basis. Uh, the county commissioners did not dismiss that, they are going to consider that. Along with that, the county staff, again, this is county facilities and the county library staff, were recommending that to go forward with some enhancement of the services here in Benita Springs, that an additional adjustment to that millage rate might be required. It was point zero five percent, and I think I gave you the numbers that, what the totals would then be. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners, again, did not dismiss that possibility. They are looking to county staff to provide some more detail on how the project could be funded, over what period of time, for what result, in other words, what would the actual project be. We've talked about in the green sheet, the differences that they first looked at, an expansion of the existing site, tear down and rebuild, or possibly building new on a different site. All we're looking for is consensus from council at this point, that you are still asking staff to work with county staff to kind of work through those, um, possibilities and options, and then to present, hopefully during this budget cycle, a plan forward on how we could look for an expanded library, uh, service in the city. Bill?
Yeah.
I attended the meeting with John and Carl. Um, it, it's, uh, it's really interesting to sit in the audience as opposed to sitting up here, and, uh, and to see, uh, the county at work.
We appreciate our city, don't we?
And it's, and it's, it's also inter, and I don't, I don't, I know everybody wants to go home, but I have to say this. Uh, it was interesting, the, the, their operating budget, uh, gentlemen and ladies, is, is twenty-three million dollars a year to run their budget for the county, and they only have income of fifteen million. Uh, so they're operating at a deficit, and of course, Sheldon recommended an increase in the mil rate...
The li, the library budget?
The library, whatever, yeah, okay. The mil, mil rate increase, and of course, in our particular situation, if you raise the mil rate, uh, it will cost us more to operate our library, and we'll be paying in three to four million dollars instead of, the operating budget's about one point four, so we'd be, we're spending two more million dollars to have the same facility. So they're in a quandary up there, and, and, uh, all I can say is that we're continuing to work towards some sort of a reasonable thing. I, I personally would like to see the library stay where it is, uh, because obviously the children and, and they use the computers, and it's a beautiful parking lot, and it's a nice facility, uh, but we really need an improvement there, so I, I think we're just going to have to wait for the county to come up with, uh...
Bill, do you suggest that, uh, with staff, keep working with, working with them?
Sure, of course, of course, but, you know, hell, I, I don't know what year...
Counsel?
I'd like to say one thing. I don't know why we're stuck at four million. I should say we should start at eleven million.
Well, can I clarify that?
Yeah.
W- one of the encouraging things about this meeting was that there was an indication that, uh, the Board of County Commissioners were not stuck at four million. Uh, they